Thank you, sorry. Thank you. Apologies to everyone who is joining us now at 7:39.
So we're gonna take it from the top?
Yeah. Sorry, Chris.
So I'm just gonna scroll down now into what I was calling Section 8. So I think a general, I think it's, I've mentioned, I think this bylaw before, it's, in my opinion, way overly complex, but I think it generally sets the general framework that sounds like Matthew and others maybe are looking for, is situates, village center neighborhoods. And it's similar to this, where they put as much as possible within this new section. So right now, I'm calling this the Thorough Depot Business. I think this could very easily be Concord Village Center Neighborhoods, something like that. The purpose, I think, would probably be pretty similar, applicable across these various villages. I think it makes sense to me that we would have a lot of the dimensional standards, which in my mind, kind of go hand in hand with the design here. And the, I guess I kind of glossed over it, but the dimensional table in the previous section does reference this for these details. And I think especially because even within this district, previously, we had talked about doing two sub-districts. I think that there's maybe an easier way to do it without splitting it up. But there's still nuance within the district, and I think we can kind of achieve that here in a way that's easier than in other sections. But again, we'll certainly go to whatever the town kind of feels most comfortable with. So this section has various lot standards. Of course, it includes some kind of simple diagrams to help explain the various dimensional standards, and things like, for example, you know, Primary Street, which is defined essentially as Sudbury Road, given the character of that compared to Thorough Street and some of the other smaller side streets, is a bit different. And so I think you would want to have standards that are slightly different in terms of the setback and things like that. And I'll just kind of go really quickly. And then it gets into, the other, I guess, overarching thing was in terms of the design standards, some bylaws are very prescriptive. They talk about what types of buildings are allowed, very specific requirements for each building type, building type meaning like mixed use versus multifamily versus townhome, et cetera. They sometimes get into the kind of details of, are you allowed to have a dormer or a roof deck, and what are the standards of that, of a bay window, things like that. I thought that was maybe a little bit overkill to some degree here. It sounded like people were more interested in setting forth some kind of principles of good design. So things like how much, you know, ground floor windows to have was more of the level that we're talking about as opposed to kind of the shape of a pillar or something like that. The location of the building and how it's oriented to the street is another aspect that I think is sort of very important and critical in terms of how something kind of creates that walkable, kind of vibrant village center that you're going for, the location of the parking. So that's, those are the types of things that were addressed here. I know there's a question, we've had some ongoing talk, and I assume we will continue to have ongoing talk about building heights. I think, you know, it sounds like, as long as a building is, A, not near a residential, or is kind of far enough away from a residence, a residential district, and also away from the public right of way, it could be an appetite for a bit of a taller building. And if it's sort of effectively shielded, that's something that, from a financial feasibility perspective of making a project happen, I think is actually quite important. I've had a number of conversations with developers, and, you know, the one comment I get is that people, including myself, don't realize how difficult it is to make the numbers work. And having that extra story to allow for development could make that happen while also benefiting the town by increasing, for example, the number of people living in the area to actually, you know, support the various businesses. So I'll just keep going with a couple of the other thoughts related to this. The final sections were a little bit more about the actual design standards related to things like vertical modulation, so breaking down like a larger building so that it essentially reads as a smaller building. That came through pretty strongly from the Visual Preference Survey, and so this is a way to do that. Ultimately, all these things would be, I think, sort of at the discretion of the planning board to review the plans and see if they, sort of, if the plans sort of comport with what the intent of the bylaw is, since these would be, I believe, through a special permit. I'll stop there, other than to say, this is now here where I have open space requirements and additional requirements. This is where, right now, I took from the combined business residents and put the special provisions for this district here. But again, it sounds like we're leaning towards putting, taking these sections, 8.28 and 8.29, out and put them back in the earlier part of the bylaw. And actually, I think this applies for 8.3 as well. So that's, basically goes through everything very quickly, but I'll take some comments now.
Thanks. I know that's a lot to do to kind of go through the amended bylaws, and then, you know, look at further, further changing them, but also kind of future-proofing it as much as you can. And I think, I think it's a good start. And I'd love to hear from other folks on the board about, you see, the questions, or what we want to think about as we're kind of doing the next steps of iteration.
Kat's got the tongue of all these folks. So I thought I would try not to speak, but I do have a couple of comments. So one is, the information in 8.26 in particular, but I think that, you know, there are aspects throughout Section 8 where this applies. If I, I thought myself of a planning board trying to, you know, evaluate a parcel, it would be difficult to kind of systematically say yes or no, that there are a lot of things that are more like design guidelines. Should, you know, what, what should the building kind of do? There's some sort of, what would you call it, discretion, you know, in terms of what you're saying. And let's go back to 8.26. You know, visually integrated as an appropriately scaled expression of the building space. So if I was gonna say now, yes or no, it's a taste thing, I guess. I mean, I don't, I couldn't say, okay, that comes up a little shorter, it's a little above. And so we do have, for example, in West Concord, the West Concord Design Guidelines, and their advisory, but they're not technically a part of the zoning bylaw. Whereas, you know, the stuff that you have in here about, you know, 100-foot setback for a four-story building, you know, with a building in front of it that's at least 34 feet tall, that's very, you know, systematic and could be enforced. So I don't know if we, you know, separate out the information about this. I mean, where you, again, I'm not saying that it's not all the design elements. You've got ones where, you know, that you need to vary the facade by minimum of one foot, you know, up to four feet every 40 feet, or something like this. That's good. That's, that's, again, what I would expect to see in form-based code. But this, I have a hard time with, as far as part of the zoning bylaw. I think it might be helpful as a design guidelines document for architects, but maybe not zoning bylaw.
So you're specifically talking about 8.26, and I would agree that-
It occurred to me most, but I think there may be phrasing throughout the section that has, you know, here or there, that has that kind of element.
Yeah, I would actually agree that compared to, actually even just vertical modulation, which I think has some very clear standards that I can, that I've incorporated, this one is a little bit more, in some ways, I guess, subjective. And I think it's true. I think it's perfectly fair to remove this section from here. This is in other bylaws. So, you know, Concord wouldn't be the first to, you know, I didn't make this up, for example. This is something that I think is, is in at least the Situate bylaw, and perhaps others as well. You know, but that being said, it's, I'm only saying that just so you know that it didn't come out of nowhere.
No, and the third bullet is an example of a definable standard. I mean, that there, okay, you can say, is there a cornice or not, you know? And you look across the building, and nope, there aren't any cornices, parapets, you know, well, roof element, I'm not sure if I know specifically what a roof element might be, generically, but, you know, change in massing, I don't know. So that, I guess that's just what I was trying to get at, is that nature.
So then, it sounds like maybe what I should do is review this section again. I think that you're, I think this 8.2.6 is the one that is most subjective, but there might be some other parts within here as well. So if something isn't, like as you said, yes, no, then perhaps it should come out of here, assuming that's the way the rest of the board feels.
And then, another one that I commented I had on this section, which may, I don't know, legally may be a problem or not, is that, you know, zoning's supposed to be uniform with, through a district. And so we're not having sub-districts, but then we're specifying that, you know, on Sudbury Road, it's one thing, and on Thorough Street, it's another. And I don't know that we can do that. I think that you, you have done clever things in, for example, the case of, hey, if you're gonna build four stories, it's gotta be at least 125 feet back. Well, guess what? On Thorough Street, you're not gonna be able to do that, right? So you don't have to call out, you know, Sudbury versus Thorough in order to get what you want, you know? And the same thing, maybe with some of these others, like setbacks or something. If there's some characteristic that is unique to the parcels along Sudbury Road, I think that'd be better than calling out that, oh, on Sudbury Road, it's gotta be this, versus Thorough Street's that.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know, again, is it a problem or not?
No, I think what you're referring to is when communities do things that are more parcel-specific, and they get struck down by the Attorney General because it's spot zoning. The length of Sudbury and the size of the Thorough Business District, you can have standards, you know, for different areas, and it's all within the Thorough Business District. I don't, I don't think the Attorney General would find that spot zoning and strike that portion down.
I just can't think of another example in our bylaw where we call out one portion of a district with some different dimensional regulation.
You might not have any, but I've seen it done in many other bylaws.
Yeah. Right. We don't look at Main Street and Walden Street differently, do we?
No.
Right.
But there are, there are many communities that do do that. I mean, there's 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth, so there's, there's lots of examples where, you know, things have passed. There are things in our zoning bylaw that today would definitely not pass. So, again, that's kind of something that, if, if we can, we can go through and change, like, the format of the zoning bylaw, I think if we were to go through and do kind of like a re-codification, I'd have to see how that would impact some of the things that definitely would be considered spot zoning. But I think to Matt's point about the design guidelines section, we can, we can definitely, you know, pull those out of the zoning bylaw. And going on Chris's suggestion, I do see that the Thorough Depot is, is just the start of this discussion. I think, you know, West Concord Village and, you know, Concord Center, and, and moving down that if we were to have a separate section of design guidelines, we would make it more holistic and have it be, you know, Village, you know, Village Business Districts, design guidelines. And then, yes, the first time around, there's only gonna be Thorough Depot. But if other districts go along the same example, and then you can add, you know, again, add those other Village Business Districts to the design guidelines. To the other question, the other comment about pulling those two sections out and putting them back into 4.2.3, we don't necessarily have to do that. There's other examples in the bylaw where specifically, there's a reference in here, like, 4.1.4 is earth removal. And all it says is, see subsection 7.5. So, under the combined business residents, you can add a new subsection that says, for the Thorough Business District, Thorough Depot Business District, see, you know, new section, new section eight, or whatever the number. Because I do agree with Chris on taking these things and having them in one place, just for ease of use and implementation.
Um, Matt, let me ask you a quick question, or anyone else, and Elizabeth, who knows about the West Concord Design Guidelines. In terms of a process, you know, is it that a new, a new property is, is coming and asking for a special permit, and then the West Concord Advisory Group looks at the design guidelines, and then it comes to the planning board? I'm trying to think about how what they've done would be similar or different than what would happen in the Thorough Business District.
Yeah, we don't have a standing committee for this area that is sort of a subcommittee of the planning board, the way that we have the West Concord Advisory Committee. But yeah, in the case of the West Concord Advisory Committee, when new projects are being proposed, they first present there, most often. And then they provide a letter to us that, among other things, evaluates the conformance to the design guidelines.
The issue with that is that there, so this, again, words, words have meaning, and they're just, they're design guidelines. They weren't adopted by town meeting, so they're, they're guidelines. And that's how some developers, you know, take them. So if all of these requirements that are in this proposed zoning are integral to having this be successful, so you would be looking at, you know, actual design standards that have to be met.
Right. Now, that's what I propose here, is that they be more design standards, but then they have to be written with a certain precision in order to be enforceable.
Thanks.
So just, I guess, just to clarify then, right now, taking Elizabeth's comment, are we thinking that we would keep the approach that I had originally proposed for some of these specifics, kind of alternatives related to the combined business? And put it all together within this section, or go back to the original, that, I guess, that Matt, not the second iteration of what Matt was suggesting, of putting it back in that section 4.2, whatever. Or just put a pin in it for now and sleep on it.
I'm a short timer, so I don't-
Yeah. Well, and also kind of thinking about the, the process, too, you know, how many, I want to be cognizant of how many times we send you back to the drawing board, and I want to, you know, be able to give you well-thought-out advice before you send things back, because otherwise, you'll come back next time, and you'll have made the changes we requested, and they'll say, we want you to change it back, you know? So I want to, I want to make sure that we give time to think, and also to hear input. But I'm thinking about kind of a long-term process here, because we've got people on the phone who I imagine want to comment, and I'd like to, you know, open it up to kind of some questions and comments to the folks on the line after the board has had their questions. But this is not, this is not the end of everything. So any comments that are made today and questions, you know, please try to help, you know, make them constructive, and give Chris kind of questions to investigate, rather than think, you know, it's a done deal. So I think the process would be, if we were gonna present in Town Meeting 2022, then prior to that, you know, we would have everything wrapped up by January of that year. And so that means in 2021, which is not far away, there would be one, I don't know, maybe two, would it be a public hearing?
So process-wise, I, you know, I imagine what, from, from here, getting, maybe going through and having each of the board members unmute themselves and make comments would probably be helpful. But that, having just a consensus on how to present this, and then from there, you're probably talking about basically going out and hitting the road as far as the, the public input, public comment portion of this. So having, you know, maybe a larger forum, or having, pulling specific items out of the proposals and having smaller forums, you know, just on one item, so that you can get a really in-depth discussion about just the parking. Or, and I don't know if Chris, I know you and Ella have, you know, a lot of expertise in that, and maybe that's a, maybe that's the, another, you know, the next discussion is basically establishing a roadmap on, you know, how to get the public, diverse public comment and input, you know, on something, you know, over the next, you know, let's say, the next six months. And then, you know, redefining, or, you know, sharpening things, or, you know, looking at, and then spending, you know, three months on refining everything. And then you're, you're gonna be into either a fall town meeting warrant schedule, or you're only, you know, three months out from having to put it on the warrant for 2022.
Chris and Ella, is that, is that kind of in your scope of work and to help us? Because that, that would be helpful, and I think for the people on the, on the phone, I think, most people want to know when, when they're gonna be able to make their input, and, you know, how quickly or how long we're gonna take to deliberate and move things along.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think the idea for tonight was sort of the, the big kind of once-over, you know, which I know is a lot, but it was to kind of give a sense for, so people can kind of see the whole. And I think the only other thing I just wanted to sort of underscore is that, you know, this zoning isn't, you know, tonight, actually, I wouldn't say tonight's kind of the first night of really the zoning, because it really all led from the visioning work that we've been doing for the past six months, or whatever it's been. So, you know, I feel like this is starting from a place that, that's already progressed, but, you know, right, as Elizabeth said, now we're starting to get into the details. So I think, yeah, we can come back, you know, with more visual presentations, and, you know, take maybe two topics per, per time, and kind of get into the details, and, and hear public comments, and then essentially try and sign off on that, and then kind of move off. It'll still be iterative, I'm sure. But, you know, I think tonight was important just to kind of get the overall, some buy-in or input, I should say, on the overall structure, because it's hard to kind of get to the details if we don't even know kind of how we're formatting this. So I think that, that does make sense to me. Ella, I don't know if you have any other thoughts? Feel free to jump in.
Okay. So, you know, this is, this is a big project for the board. This is one of our, our big goals for the next year. So we are gonna need to hear from everybody in terms of, you know, how well what we have here captures the vision and so far, and thinking about the comments that we've heard so far from other people. Nathan, Kate, Haley, Alan, Burton, comments, questions, things that you want Chris and Ella to go back and research and find out for us. All right. Then let me open it up for public comment for a few minutes, if we would. Again, remembering that we are working together to build consensus for the, the whole vision here. So please make your comments constructive, and give us specific things. And I thought you were writing, Nathan, says, "I can't unmute." Oh, ask to unmute, sorry. How about now? I was like, I think he's writing us a note.
Something changed, because a second ago, I had the ability to unmute, and then all of a sudden, it was gone. Anyway, I was just gonna say, one, I appreciate the work that Chris and Ella put into this so far. I know, looking at it, that, you know, I need, I definitely need some more time to sort of review and digest what, what's in there. But I, I mean, for me, I kind of like the idea of, we could all do that and review it, and kind of bring for future meeting, kind of our own questions, either with Chris and Ella, or just with the planning board itself. And then further down the line, once we've sort of ironed out where we think it needs to be, then have the, like a public forum, where we've narrowed, we kind of have it where we think it needs to be, and then have the public forums, where we're maybe just making tweaks, rather than, you know, having sort of an, you know, open, open commentary on all the different aspects and making big changes at that point from public comment.
Thank you.
I'll just, I'm, and I'm really regretting missing the big presentation earlier in the summer, unfortunately. But I'm gonna go back and review that meeting and the, and the comments that we got at that meeting, because I know that there were quite a few. And also, all the comments that we've received via email, and just echoing what Nate, what Nate said, looking back again, and scheduling this on a forthcoming agenda to, to kind of get down to brass tacks on it.
Okay. So if we, if Chris and Ella, you can help us kind of work backwards with the schedule, then we kind of know when we want to schedule some, some future time with it for this. I will open this up to public comment for a few minutes. I just want to remind everybody who is going to comment that this particular endeavor is stemming from the Envision Concord, the Long Range Plan, and, you know, what we're gonna do with our village centers and things like that. So a lot of input has already gone in to this, and then we have the two meetings for the vision. We are not going to please everybody with every aspect, so we're all working towards consensus on this. So we would like to, you know, hear your opinion. Chris can take some notes, we can take some notes. And then, you know, again, there'll be, there'll be future discussions as we work towards this. So I will, I will, if you have a comment, you're gonna raise your hand, we're gonna see your hand. I will click "Ask to Unmute," and you should be able to unmute yourself. So, Mr. Galis, your hand is up?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I wanted to thank everybody for all this careful work. I think this is the right way to do things. I have one specific input relating, it may, I'm not sure how it will work out in zoning, but with regard to the vision plan, there's some mention of street trees and pocket parks, et cetera. And in this kind of mixed, you know, commercial or mixed area, we don't have any specific policies or zoning, I know, that I know of relating to, you know, trees, tree canopy, tree preservation, tree planting, et cetera. And I would like to see some thought, if there are possible ways to encourage developers to assist in creation of a significant way of sustaining, you know, modest-sized trees or vegetation in a development area. I mean, it changes the character of it a lot. And the idea- I mean, it changes the character of it a lot. And the idea of putting as an afterthought, little, you know, tiny places for trees right along the street where they don't survive is not really the, the, the best way to go. So I just kind of was kind of throwing that out there as something. I mean, maybe if somebody's developing a large parcel, there could be some incentive one way or another to sort of, you know, create a little pocket park type thing or a little kind of, I don't know what the right architectural term is, but a little kind of garden area cradled by a building or something. That's all I wanted to throw out there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking for other hands. I don't, I don't see any other hands up. So let me give people another minute. I see another, okay. Thought I saw a hand up. Ms. Walsh, I'm going to ask you to unmute and we would like to hear your comment, please. Please state your name and address too.
Sure. Moira Walsh, 169 Theroe Street. And I cannot commend you enough for all of your work. This is a enormous project that you have all taken on as mostly volunteers and, and I appreciate it greatly. And I would like to just make a comment to Ms. Hughes. I'm in agreement with her that I, I would like to see an advisory. I live in the neighborhood. I would like to see an advisory council, but I do believe as, as Ms. Hughes said, that if you don't put certain things like design elements in to the project, Chris, that, I mean, I've seen what Situate has done in other places, it can get lost. And I think it's important to do that. So I would appreciate that. And I have one other question. Is there some way you can present this in a 3D way? I mean, you are all so savvy with zoning numbers and information, and I know this is only a beginning. But is there some way of envisioning this either in an architectural way, just so people can get a sense of what it looks like that you're talking about?
Well, I tried to get at that from the, which is in the vision plan, which has some diagrams. I, I don't want to go too far in terms of, you know, making it seem like these diagrams are the only way to go. I, I tried to instead kind of evoke a sense for the type of building, the scale, some of the elements that would belong. But the, the vision plan, I, I think has that.
Okay.
Trying to picture that. And it's reflective of, of what I think the zoning could be.
Right. And I do think we have to remember that we are two blocks from a historic district. And that this area is first, the first place that people from all over the world see as they get off the train. So I just, I think it's a great start and I'm very much in favor of mixed housing and use. I don't think this is the appropriate forum for me to speak about my objections to the Starbucks development. So I'm not going to comment on that here. I will comment, I've sent emails about my objection to that. So I think I'm correct in that. Am I correct in that?
Right. We're, we're not talking about that part right now.
So, but this part I am all in favor of and would do anything to help you develop this. And I have concerns because I saw what happened at the mobile station. And again, you know, it was paved beautifully, but then they, instead of staying like Duncan did with a nice colonial sign or something more, and within Concord character, it, they put up this huge white new covering. And they also took away the, there used to be bushes. I've lived here a while. There used to be bushes separating the road from the pave, from their driveways and pavements, and they're gone. And now they park 16 cars there a day. And I don't think people really thought about what that would look like when they approved it. But it looks a bit like a used car dealership right now. So I just want to be, be able to think carefully. But please go forward because you're doing a, a great service. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Are there, I'm not seeing any other hands up. So please take a moment if you'd like to comment. Click the raised hand. All right. Again, not, not going to be your last time to comment. And we appreciate your thoughtful review of the documents that are on the, on the website, which are the Concord Theroe Depot Plan, the vision memo. And then the most recent document is about get, kind of getting more into the weeds about the change, changes, potential changes to the zoning by law. And we will plan to be working on this among other, other topics over the next year. So thank you very much. Anything else for Chris or Ella before we let them go?
No, except for what do they feel the next steps are as far as moving forward? Unless Burton has a comment.
Nope.
I think Elizabeth, what would make sense to me, I, we were talking about kind of the timeline a little bit, but I think if you and I had a conversation either later this week or early next week and we can talk through based upon upcoming board meetings, what makes sense and it kind of take it offline. I think that would make to me the most sense. And we can discuss maybe a little bit more of the, the concept of could this be ready for the special fall town meeting? In which case, M E P C could probably go all the way to it. Versus if we have to do like a little bit of a handoff prior to that. That's my suggestion to just, and then we can report back to the board.
All right. Well, thank you. And we appreciate your work so far. And we're looking forward to giving you some more information so you have more to work with. So thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. All right. Exciting stuff is happening. Not that the rest of the meeting items aren't as exciting, but, all right. So does anybody need a break to go get water beside me? You guys are heartier than me. All right. Moving on, we, last week, last Wednesday, we had the public hearing about the planning board, our articles. And as well as Article 41 and 42, which were by citizen petition. And our plan tonight is to kind of debrief from that, from that hearing, whether there was anything, any other information about, about our motions. Town meeting is, is coming up. We have got one more meeting before then, but it's pretty busy. So right now what we're doing is Article 32, 34, and 37, those are the ones that are going to, you know, come before everybody for discussion and voting at town meeting. The other articles, which are 35, 36, 38, and 39, have been included on the consent calendar with the planning board's report, recommendations, and motion. And right now the town council is reviewing the documents to make sure it meets the requirements under Mass General Law. And we are going to need to provide a, a report or at least kind of our, our recommendation, I believe, to town meeting on Articles 41 and 42. And those were the ones that Ms. Galis presented at the, at the hearing. So I wanted to, one, get feedback on Articles 41 and 42. And then I wanted to come back and just touch base on 32, 34, and 37, which were the PRD changes, the accessory dwelling, and then the change to the, the Row Business District boundary to see if we have any comments or, or discussion about that. And I'd like to note for the record that we're in receipt of an email from Gail Hayer, 54 Nancy Road, and in support of Articles 41 and 42. So 41 and 42 were about the, the signage for the PRDs, questions or comments since that was presented last week.
Questions specifically on 41 and 42?
Yes.
I just thought I should note that the select board voted humanely to support passage of 41 and 42 in their most recent meeting.
Thank you. I didn't have any questions. I thought they were well presented. I thought they were, it was a, a good idea with, with public support. You know, some, some support behind it, a lot, a lot of comments. But given the, you know, given what I've seen in terms of representation about PRD and, and public input, if, I think this could be helpful to the process. So if there are no other comments from the board, can I take a vote about whether we are going to support? Is that what we're doing?
It would be recommending affirmative action or recommending no action.
Do I need to get a motion for that?
You do need a motion, a second, and a vote and a roll call.
So I would, I would entertain a motion for, does it matter? Can we do them together or would you like to have them separate?
I think we can do them together. So I, I move that we recommend affirmative action on Articles 41 and 42 as presented at the public hearing.
Second.
All right. Let's, let's take a vote and we'll go around. Ms. McAnaney.
Yes.
Mr. Seiya.
Yes.
Ms. Ordall.
Yes.
Mr. Flint.
No.
Mr. Buzzett.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And this is Ms. Ferguson. Yes. So, thank you very much to the petitioners and we will look forward to seeing that at town meeting. So then the other items, and just to kind of talk briefly individually about them were Article 32, that's accessory dwelling. Any feedback from the public hearing that any of the board wanted to make? That would, you know, change or anything for what we, how we move things for town meeting?
Can we take a moment to clarify what we are doing in terms of moving for town meeting? I don't think we're, you're talking about making any change or, well, maybe that would be on the table. But so for the accessory dwelling unit, I don't think there would be any changes, but what are, do we know what's being presented? If, if anything?
Well, I mean, there is no presentation though. I mean, so like, we just want to make sure that any public comment we heard doesn't change that our, our motion to present the article as.
We'll make a motion and then there will be an opportunity for people to, you know, make remarks. But the presumption is that we had, you know, this new public hearing and that there was opportunity to debate the article there. So hopefully for the sake of the expediency of the meeting, there won't be, you know, a protracted debate in person. We'll see.
And certainly for accessory dwelling unit, I don't, you know, I don't think there was any right in our public hearing.
So procedurally to Burton's question, procedurally and historically after the public hearing, because the public hearing happens after the board submits their article and it gets printed in the warrant. And then there's the public hearing. The planning board has a discussion about the comments and any issues or concerns that were raised at the public hearing and whether their position that they've taken on the article is the same, whether there's anything within the, the warrant article that they may want to change or whether the board doesn't want to move the article at all. So, you know, those are, you know, those are your, your three options. So it's just traditionally and procedurally, the board has always had a conversation after a public hearing on articles. To the, the issue of part of the board's packet was the actual reports for 32, 34, and 37. Town council has reviewed those and feels that from a procedural standpoint, these are acceptable as far as the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter 40A. And what's going to be printed on the consent agenda will have the board's motion, reason, and, you know, the recommendation that that is consistent and acceptable for Chapter 40A. Town council did just have one simplification of the motion for Article 34, the PRD. On the handout you have, it stated, Mr. Johnson moves that the town meeting take affirmative action on Article 34 as amended and printed in the September 13th, 2020 meeting materials. Town council simplified that to read, Mr. Johnson moves that town meeting take affirmative action on Article 34 as printed in the materials distributed for the September 13th, 2020 town meeting. So it's just a simplification. So, and then, you know, whether the board had any revisions to these handouts. That would be included in, they aren't, they won't be separate meeting camp, there won't be separate handouts. They'll all be included in one meeting material packet.
Yeah. I mean, there was really no feedback on 34 at the public hearing. And I thought that the revised version of the explanation was, you know, comprehensive. So I think we're all set for 34 unless somebody else had something.
I did not have anything on 34. Similarly with 32, I think there was relatively little discussion. Again, that was the additional dwelling unit.
Is it, is it accessory or additional? I see it kind of being used interchangeably.
Additional.
That's what the bylaw says, additional.
Thanks. When, when use of the word accessory snuck through in the actual amendment, but it's, it's, it's this, the section is, is additional.
So that brings me to Article 37, which is Theroe Business District and Residency Zoning District Boundary. And that was the one that we did get public comment on particularly from neighbors right in the, in the neighborhood there. So I wanted to ask the board, you know, based on what you heard at the, at the meeting, at the public hearing, you know, does this change your opinion, our opinion of, of this article? Or what was your impression of, of the take on this?
So I, it definitely did make me think again about the project. And of course, this isn't to permit that project, although these changes do, would allow, would allow us to permit it, potentially approve a permit in the future. Right? So I just want to, that to be clear. So we kind of held off on the most substantive and, and important aspects of reviewing the project from a safety perspective and which is not really our jurisdiction, but, you know, the detailed review has not happened yet because we do not have that permit application before us right now. What's before us right now is making the change to the district. But of course, there's the connection to the potential, the future permit application, right? It, I have to say that the comments did really make me think about it because when, when the project came before us the first time, I was seeing it as the resolution to a safety problem. And the folks who are speaking of now are seeing it as, as that, as something that it could actually exacerbate the safety problem. So I was wondering if, I was trying to remember the process, you know, what we, we had heard from the police and the fire as kind of having signed off on, on the proposal to have the two, to have the two curb cuts. And I was just, I was just trying to figure out, and Elizabeth, I don't know if you, you would know this just as a matter of like procedure, as to whether the police and fire had kind of like, they had signed off on the plans, meaning, you know, they're, like they didn't have a safety problem with it, or whether they had actually expressed that they thought that it actually, that they ameliorated a current safety and trap, a traffic issue that existed. So, and I, so I was just trying to figure out whether, I was trying to figure where we stand with feeling that it it ameliorates or it actually exacerbates the situation that exists now.
So I think every, everybody can agree that there, there is a problem right now. So what, so trying to keep this focus on the warrant article, all the warrant article does is allows the property owner to go forward through the permit. the property owner to go forward through the permitting process to, to see, you know, to have this project move forward. And it's going to be a special permit process, it's, it's not by right. The comments from the police chief and the fire chief is that, you know, there, there is a problem right now, and creating a, a one-way in and allowing the, you know, additional room for cars to come into the site and come around, moving the driveway further away from the intersection, you know, is like, is, is an improvement. And that's as far as it, it went. There, there is no, you know, they haven't signed off on this project, they haven't approved anything. During, you know, should this pass town meeting and they go, start going through the permitting process, you know, they may be asked to, you know, show a traffic study and a turning movement study. They will have to go through Public Works for, you know, should it be approved for roadway, you know, driveway opening permits and meet standards for that. So there's a lot of things that, you know, will, will proceed to happen, you know, but it can't, it can't happen unless, you know, the zoning changes. So, so there, there is no approval from the police chief or the fire chief. It's their opinion that having the one-way traffic flow and having the exit be further away from the intersection than right there at the corner, where it does create a significant vehicle and pedestrian conflict would likely be a better solution. So that was, that was the process. There's no approval by them, though.
Thank you, that's so helpful. So that really helps me to circle back, so to, I think where I stand on this is that we can say that we wish that Starbucks would move some, somewhere else, but I don't think that they will. So I think if we don't make this change, then we don't open up the door to have that potentially improve the situation. So I think the right thing to do, my vote, is to, is to allow us to explore this option with them by, by making the, the changes to the district. So I'm, I'm in support of, you know, of keeping it as it is and going forward with the, potentially reviewing a special permit from them.
Thank you. I think, I think that was useful discussion and helpful clarifying comments from Elizabeth, I appreciate that. Other, other folks from the board, this was the one that we did have public input on.
I would just second what Kate said. I thought the feedback we got at the last meeting was very thoughtful. But what, what was just described by Elizabeth is the opportunity to get another bite of the apple and deal with things like the truck being parked during the day on the street, and, you know, the delivery vehicle and things like that. And, and while undoubtedly what would be proposed by the property owner would look a lot like the conceptual plan, you know, it would, the status quo isn't working, and this, and the special permit process could give us the opportunity to solve problems and, and get further feedback. None of that will, will be initiated if we don't support the, the boundary change. So I, I'm, you know, in an odd way, even from, from hearing the feedback, I'm even more in favor of the article, because I think that, that this, the status quo, you know, we, we need to reconsider it and, and through the special permitting process. Thanks.
So, the only thing I would add is that, well, first I will say that I agree the, the comments that we received, I, I thought were very insightful and helpful, even that it's, you know, neighbors and butters to that Starbucks. But one thing I also wanted to point out was there was a lot of focus on, well, this is a Starbucks problem, which is somewhat true, but regardless of what business is in there at any given point in time, the way that that in and out is currently structured would be bettered by having the exit moved a little further down. So even if there's less traffic, it's still better that they would be exiting further down our perspective and, and, you know, in my opinion. But I would also just like to see, to have the ability to have, you know, a more thorough discussion if we were entered into a special permit process for that, for that property, so.
Thanks. Other, other comments from the board?
I just supported also. I don't have much to add to what has been said, but, I mean, there's clearly a problem there now. I think going through this, so we'll have the opportunity to make something better, I think, but I supported.
Thank you. Haley or Matt, any other comments that we haven't heard yet, or any things to think about?
Two things, I think that first, that there was a comment made in the public hearing that, hey, why is this part of the integrated view that we're taking to the thorough district right now? And that's kind of interesting, because, you know, when we were developing this amendment, it was before that project even started, and then the town meeting's schedule's been so, you know, delayed that we've managed to practically complete the other project in the interim. But I would also comment that that site, even though it is part of the district, it's very isolated by the railroad tracks and its orientation. You know, that it isn't, I think, something that we have to consider as part of the big project, let's say. I think that we can look at it as one parcel. But the other comment that I would make is, that, that I thought that was very compelling was, hey, why are we promoting car-centric development? Because in effect, you know, what this is doing is it's making it more convenient for vehicles, in accommodating vehicles. Yes, it may address the safety in, you know, just a nuisance problem with the traffic, but, you know, from a complete streets perspective, is it improving pedestrian safety? You know, is it creating a more walkable community? Or is it encouraging a business to be more car-centric? And I think that that's a pretty compelling argument, you know, and that indeed, expanding the district is, or that, the, yeah, the, the district boundaries is what would enable a more car-centric rather than pedestrian-centric plan. Now, it's true that right now, the plan is kind of, you know, continuing to try to accommodate cars and not doing a very good job of it, but should we further encourage that? And so, you know, that's certainly made me have doubts about this. So I'm, I'm really, I think, torn. I, when I first heard this option, I thought, wow, you know, what a great solution to, you know, to what has been a clear problem. But then the more you think about it, the more it's like, well, maybe, maybe not. And in fact, you know, it, to me, it seems like one of the worst citing decisions in, in the town's history. And now we're trying to accommodate it rather than just kind of say, well, that was the worst citing decision in the town's history.
And learn from it.
So one thing, if I could just jump in, I would, I would take the view that we're getting a little bit of a trade-off, potentially getting a little bit of a trade-off, right? We, they would be adding or may be able to use the existing residential space that is above. So that sort of moves towards, you know, we're getting, you know, in a town center, some residential space. The parking is, and again, this is all based off of what they initially showed, doesn't really add a whole lot of additional parking when you factor in that some of it has to go to that residential use. So as far as like volume going through the Starbucks, I don't know that you're going to have all of a sudden just a, you know, a flood of new cars going through that were previously trying to somehow, you know, back and forth through that in and out situation. It's just allowing for a smoother transition of the existing volume that goes there. You know, this is again, something we can talk about more during, you know, potential special permit process, but I think there's, we do get a little something out of it in terms of the housing portion. I'm not sure that there would be a notable uptick in volume.
Thanks. Haley, you have any comments?
Kristen, I'll also add, one of the comments from the public hearing had to do with, and, and I do agree with Matt's, you know, comment about the, the car-centric aspect, and then tempered by Nathan's comment, well, what this project does allow, does allow for the residential units on the second floor, and they, you know, will have parking for that. But there was a comment made at the public hearing that, you know, people would then just go, you know, around and around until a spot opened up. And, and that's something that gets into, that is, that is purely a site planning question, not a, not a zoning question, and is something that during that special permit process, with the input from the community safety officer and the town engineer, and whether a turning, you know, attorney movement study is required, there may be a restriction that, you know, it's only, you know, a right turn, or, you know, no left, no left turn, I don't, I don't know. But those are the, the specific details that get to be discussed during a special permit process that aren't, you know, aren't part of a zoning process.
Thanks, Haley.
I should mention that the select board did unanimously recommend affirmative action. And then one final comment that I think, again, was reflected in the comments that we got at the public hearing, which, which was, you know, why are we expanding a commercial district when there's a lot of empty storefronts? You know, do we need more commercial space in town right now?
This isn't creating more commercial space, though, Matt. So how does that, how does that jump in?
It, it does, because it's expanding the size of the business district.
Oh, you concerned they're going to stick another building back there?
Matter of real estate for devoted to commercial purposes, right?
But you couldn't stick another business back there?
Well, could you make it larger? You know, I mean, I don't know, Elizabeth saying
I'm not really understanding.
Yeah, I get, well, it's actually to just sort of maybe encouraging, you know, the business to stay there versus move somewhere else, you know, that, I think that was the motive of the comments that we heard anyway, at least to reflect what the comments we've reserved, received in the public hearing.
And, and remember, you know, for all of us listening, there's, there's there's two different things, right? There's the, the business owner, or, or, you know, the property owner, I should say, and then there's the, the tenants, right? So, and, and we, we don't have a say that they use this side, right? So I want to make sure, right, I want to make sure
To encourage something versus not, yeah.
Exactly. And, and, you know, it's possible with the new development vision for the whole area, there might be other attractive places for, you know, any, any business and things like that. We, we don't know. And then again, that's not part of this discussion necessarily. But Haley, you're, you're the only one I didn't see if you, if you did have any thoughts based on this, because, yeah, we're of two minds on this.
Yeah, I just was gonna ask, just to clarify, Matt, on what you said, yeah, I heard you say, I appreciate your comment about having, having doubts at this point, but you also said that the select board unanimously did approve, so was that, were you included in that, or are you kind of
I'm not a board yet, no.
Oh, okay. Okay, got it. No, I, I don't have anything necessarily new. It's, you know, I, I don't know that side of town as well, so I'm not nearly as familiar with like, the issue that, you know, everybody's acknowledging, but I can appreciate that it's not necessarily black and white, or it's not black and white to me anyways.
Right, it's certainly not as kind of straightforward as we thought when we originally heard, heard this proposal. And when, when we, you know, originally planned to move this article, I do think, and I still think, we all think there is room for improvement, for sure. What, what gives me pause are the things that, that we heard people say and that Matt reiterated tonight, was, you know, expanding the district to the detriment of the two-family residential house that's right next to it, and essentially, you know, that's going to have to get paved over pretty much to accommodate housing. And again, I know that's not part of this discussion necessarily, but it's, it's something that I think we're trying to think about and weigh the pros and cons. We, we know there's not going to be a perfect solution, but we want to offer an improvement and most definitely not something that's going to decrease safety in that area. And, and the other thing is that, you know, we, we, our public comment that we've heard are from people that are right there in that area, and, and of course, they're the ones most knowledgeable and they see the most, so it's right that we hear from them. We didn't hear from, you know, other, other folks in town, and, and town meeting would be an opportunity to kind of, in theory, hear from a larger group of people about this comment, having either watched what, watched the public hearing, read the materials, or heard any other comment in town meeting. But at the same time, I, I, since we have gotten further along in the thorough business district, the, the vision and that, you know, plan, it does make me wonder if we're being short-sighted by, you know, proposing an expansion of this to accommodate the one way when there could be potential few other solutions, so. So that being said, I hear, you know, most of us in favor of moving as, as we had planned. And I don't necessarily see a reason not to, because we're not making that decision. Ultimately, it's up to the voters at town meeting, and the voters at town meeting can hear this. I guess my question is procedurally, is there anyone who feels strongly enough to make a motion that we do not move the article? Katie?
Um, can, is it too, this is just the hypothetical, but can we change, can we still change the article to keep the mobile, the change at the mobile property, and since we're reducing the scope of it? And then take out the Starbucks piece?
I believe we could make an amendment like that, because like you're saying, it decreases the scope. Does anyone else feel strongly one way or another? We, we're gonna, we're running out of time, so we have to make a decision soon, and we didn't, we're not going to have any more information after this point anyway, so.
You have to make a decision tonight?
Yes.
Yeah.
But I mean, we have all the information we need. We have, you know, more, more public feedback. We have, have time to, you know, think about this through a couple of meetings, public hearings, I mean, so.
I would, Kate, I think it's an interesting idea to reduce the scope. I, I would say, you know, we know there's a, I'm trying to keep the focus on whether or not to move it forward or not, as opposed to the merits of the proposal. We know that there's a problem. It's, it's unlikely Starbucks will go away due to being too busy. So the problem will probably persist, and it is currently has a permit to operate. I think that our job as a planning board is to put forward solutions, proposals to, to solve problems, rather than just sort of hoping that the, you know, the, the, the problem will go away for, for other reasons. And I suspect this will have a very high, a hard road, it'll be, it'll be difficult to get this through with a two-thirds required. But I do think it, it's, it's part of our responsibility to, to put forward a solution. And keeping in mind, we're not dictating a solution, we're allowing for the, for a planning process which could which could develop a solution that would build consensus. So I think we should, I think we should continue to support the article as it is.
Thanks. Other folks?
I, I just, I wish I, um, I'm starting to doubt whether this actually is affixed to the safety problem versus just allowing for more business at that location. Like, for example, like, right now, like, the cars are so stuck that you can't get in that much trouble as a pedestrian, but if the cars, if there's actually more free flow of traffic in and out, it can actually make the situation worse. I mean, potentially, I don't know if it does or not. So I'm kind of caught in that and not, and, and not knowing whether we make this change that we're sort of just like paving the way. we're sort of just like paving the way for this special permit and not. So I just, I'm also just, I'm kind of like going back and forth on it, like, but with Burton, that makes sense a lot in terms of like, why make something easier for the cars to, you know, to, I'm so conflicted. It's not helpful, sorry.
Yeah, so I guess I'll, my personal, like, because I go across that and down and pass to the right, as both car and pedestrian, my perspective is at that intersection, that corner, if you were coming down from the railroad tracks and making a right is super unsafe because there's bushes, an electrical box, a tele, or a light pole and a lot of obstruction to seeing what is going in or out of that parking lot as it is right now. And many times when I've been coming down, when you get a green light, you're coming down from the railroad tracks and you're making a right onto, onto the street there. You know, there have been kids who are going around cars that are waiting to get in or out of that parking lot. There are cars trying to come out who can't see cars coming the other direction because the cars coming in are blocking their view. So to me, as someone who goes through that intersection or around that corner in particular, quite often, just moving the, or separating the in and out, to me, is a huge improvement for pedestrians, cyclists and, and car traffic coming through there. And I just, I just don't think it's going to add a lot of.
So once again.
Traffic.
Yeah, so again, this is, these are details not germane.
Yes.
To the warrant article. The warrant article, and this would be something that would be needed to be changed in, I think, in your report to town meeting, is that it talks about what the first few sentences talk about, you know, what the property owner hopes to, hopes to do and that, you know, supported by the fire chief and the police chief. And currently it reads to accomplish this project. Well, it's not to accomplish this project. It's however, for the property owner to move forward with the filing of a special permit application, this warrant, this zoning change needs to happen. So once again, the particular aspects of whether separating the driveways, whether the turning movements are improved, whether it's, you know, an improvement for a pedestrian or not, those are all aspects of a special permit process and they're going to have to have a transportation engineer, you know, they'll be, you know, they'll be requested and strong, you know, strongly suggest part of their application that they provide that that specific turning movement and that analysis to see if that is an improvement.
I guess my comment was just that we can't even get to that stage without allowing for this.
Correct.
Yes.
You cannot even investigate whether it's an improvement without the bylaw amendment, the map zoning change going forward.
All right, well, this is, this is a sticky, sticky topic. As, you know, the public knows and who has been weighing in and trying to help make suggestions for improving as well, I guess I, what I'm hearing is that we want to continue at going forward for town meeting and letting the, letting the town decide at town meeting as originally planned.
Yeah, I'm for that, Kristen.
If anybody disagrees, speak up. Okay, and we have, because we just had the public hearing and we had public input then, public comment then, I wasn't going to open up to public comment right now. If procedurally that is acceptable, we have public comment at the very end, but I just want to make sure. We have, as I think, well, go ahead, Elizabeth, did you?
So before you move off this, this topic, so one, I suggested that one edit. Two, the reason for Article 37, if the board is in agreement with that edit.
Do we need to take a vote?
No.
I think it would be very helpful in clarifying.
Okay, so I will do that. And then following up to Burton's point, I did find, and to Haley's question, an additional dwelling unit or an accessory dwelling unit are the same thing. They're, you know, planning speak, they're interchangeable, but our bylaw does talk about additional dwelling units and it's under section, item H, Burton, where accessory dwelling unit got snuck in. So I would suggest that the motion be changed to, and town council will review this when I submit this tonight. Mr. Flint moves that the town take affirmative action on Article 32 as printed in the warrant with the substitution of the word accessory with additional in item H or something to that, you know, effect. I'm sure town council will make it sound much better, but.
I would, I would support that. I, I noticed that last week. I didn't realize we could make a change like that this late in the process, so.
You can as part of the motion, which, and so also, after the public hearing, I went back, went through all of the previous meetings that the board talked about, all of these zoning articles. And there was one item for, under the relief for parking, and I think it was back in, I don't know, it was, it was discussion, you know, months and months and months ago, but there, the parking criteria. So this is Article 36. When the board voted to recommend, you know, affirmative action on that warrant, there was one addition and that was under the standard of item A, which talks about documentation for a parking study. The board added at the end, if applicable. So that is something that got included in the motion. It is on the consent agenda, but that was the vote of the board was, because if I remember correctly, at the public hearing, somebody stood up and mentioned, if you don't have if applicable, how it reads, it assumes that everybody has to submit a parking study for relief from parking if they feel the zoning bylaw requirements are up to industry standards. Many of the relief from parking requests that comes through is not because the zoning bylaw doesn't meet industrial standards, it's for other reasons. So the board did add that at the end. So I just wanted the board to know that that did get included.
Thank you. Thanks for catching all those last minute changes. I know everything is kind of going to press pretty soon, so. So thank you to, you know, folks that are listening on the phone. I know we are on the meeting. I know that you have been watching very carefully about town meeting and the articles and we will have public comment, kind of open public comment at the very end of this meeting. We have heard you. We want to kind of come up with the best solution that we can and I think it'll be good to, you know, bring it in front of, bring all of the articles in front of the town and, you know, have some more discussion then and hear the town's vote. So thank you for your patience with those things. All right, shall we move on? We've got another item of administrative business. It's the Attorney General's Open Meeting Law Determination and it's about our September 10th, 2019 meeting minutes. To recap, and I know the board has kind of this information, an open meeting law complaint was filed with the Attorney General regarding those minutes alleging that the minutes omitted comments made by the chair and two other board members that the PRD plan would be preferable to a subdivision and it omits that a vote was taken to recommend the PRD plan to the Board of Appeals. So we got a filing, we've got a finding back, which was useful because now we can make amendments to, to those, to those minutes and accept those and get those approved. I wanted to see if anybody had questions and then I was kind of, there were some takeaways that I had from, you know, just the procedure of an open meeting law complaint and how it's handled and what, you know, we as a board need to be cognizant of going, going forward. But yes, let me, let me hear questions and comments before we resolve those minutes.
I was just hoping, I read the letter and I, I thought that they said they didn't agree with the complaint, but they found something else. But I was hoping someone could just explain to me exactly what the finding was. Maybe Burton can do that.
Yeah, so there, well, there were two elements to the complaint that was received. One, that the basis of our decision was not made clear because people had said that there was this, this comment about other subdivisions. And then that the, the minutes did not accurately reflect that a vote had been taken. The findings by the Attorney General's Office was that the first complaint was without merit or that, that's not the language, but said that it did not find that to be the case. The second, with respect to stating that a vote had, had taken, had been taken, it said that a formal vote was not taken in fact, but when it, it said, curiously, it said when I said that I was, would vote subject to reviewing the town planner's letter, the minutes didn't actually say that. So it's a little, it's a little odd because where the Attorney General's response was quoting what I said, it wasn't in, that's, that's not what in fact.
Right.
Minute reflected.
Yeah.
So, but the point, the larger point was that it, it did, even though no formal vote was taken and the minutes accurately reflected, that did not say that a formal vote would later than be subject, it was not in the video that the formal vote would be subject to reviewing Elizabeth's letter. So the foul was not, it was saying that it would be subject to the review of Elizabeth's letter. Of course, we were all in the room, said, well, do we want Elizabeth to write a letter? Let's do a show of hands. So at any rate, that's, that was the finding.
So what's the amendment to the meeting minutes?
Not saying that we're taking a show of hands, but approve, nothing about it being subject to review of Elizabeth's letter at the following meeting.
Right.
So in the agenda memo, I made a recommendation for the substitution of that paragraph for just exactly what was in the Attorney General's letter.
Oh, thanks Elizabeth. I saw the letter and I didn't see your amendment.
Yeah, I thought it was fine, the rephrasing. So should I make a motion? I move that we amend the minutes of, it's September 10th, 2019, to reflect the paragraph as written in the planner's memo for tonight's meeting.
Second. Okay, let's take a vote.
Is there a further discussion?
Oh.
I had a quick question. Elizabeth, that, that language, I take it, it hasn't actually been run by the Attorney General's Office to change?
No, but I don't think it has to be.
Okay, all right. I mean, the only reason I asked Matt is because I was scratching my head, trying to figure out what, what, what the change really needed to be. I, I, I think Elizabeth's language accurately reflects, reflects exactly what was said in the meeting, having gone back and looked at it.
Yeah.
Hopefully that meets it, but I just wasn't exactly clear from the letter, so. But my question.
I think we're doing what the letter asked us to do.
Appreciate it. Any, any other discussion? All right, let's, let's take a vote on the motion. Mr. Bazet?
Yes.
Ms. Orbital?
Yes.
Mr. Flint?
Yes.
Mr. Seah?
Yes.
Ms. McInney?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And this is Ms. Ferguson, yes.
Who seconded?
I did.
Kate seconded. All right, well, thank you for following up with that and we appreciate that the complainant, you know, stuck with the process, so thank you. And as you probably know, we do our best to make sure that we're complying with open meeting law and that our meeting minutes reflect the minute, the meeting so that everybody can read it and substantially understand what happened over there. The other takeaway that I saw was that we had 14 business days to review and respond. So in the future, I'm sure we will do that and in the future, we may not see that again, so. All right, moving right along, we are now up to, did, did we have meeting minutes for August 11?
I reviewed sort of minutes.
I think we did because I think I remember reading it. That's the, that's the one I was not at.
Burton's meeting that he.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Burton's 19 minute meeting.
He's, Burton's going to steal my record. It's painful.
I moved to accept the minutes of the meeting of August 11th as written.
I second.
Okay, and any discussion? Nope. All right, Mr. Bazet?
Yes.
Ms. Orbital?
Yes.
Mr. Flint?
Yes.
Mr. Seah?
Yes.
Ms. McInney?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And this is Ms. Ferguson, yes. All right. And now we've got planning board liaison reports and town planner updates. I'm sure, because we've been pretty busy, Elizabeth, we probably haven't heard a lot from, from you. Would you like to start?
Sure, a couple of, couple of updates. So if everybody hasn't heard, I believe you have all heard, we've received a $135,000 Mass Trails grant for the Assabett River pedestrian bridge and trail. Combine that, and so I have already received the contract. It is already up to the town manager's office for a signature. We have had an initial scoping meeting with Mass Trails DOT, the town engineer, the natural resources director and the engineers at GPI. GPI is the engineering firm that is doing all the Bruce Freeman rail trail work. They are the ones that did our initial feasibility study and so they had great, great meeting on how to move forward and hopefully town meeting passes the CPC warrant article, which includes $250,000 for the design permitting and engineering for the bridge. And we should be moving forward with that project very, you know, very soon. And we have gotten indication, we did file a project notification form with Mass DOT to have this project, once we get to, I'm not sure if it's 25% design, but for inclusion on the state's transportation improvement program for actual construction funds. So, you know, it, it looks like it is going to happen, so. And Marcia and I did meet with the new owners of 310 Baker Avenue and they are in full support of this project and working with the town to making that connection to that site. So that is, that, that was one of my biggest, my biggest news items that I wanted to share.
That's great news.
I could, so being the CPC liaison, I know a lot about this project because we're, it's in our funding. And I would just wanted to say, Elizabeth, you and Marcia are to be commended. I see how these things move incrementally, a little step, a little step, a little step. And I know we've already done the design that was funded by the town and now we're, we're funding the permitting and then you got this and I think. the design that was funded by the town. And now we're, we're funding the permitting and then you got this. And I think I, I looked at all the grants that were part of that grant cycle. And I think this was the, of the, something like, I don't know, 50 grants. This was the largest or second largest grant across the state. So this is, this is awesome. And as a resident of West Concord, it's great to see focus on improving the, the walkability in, in our town. So thank you.
So, and then we did, I know I informed the board, we did get the grant for the Concord Shuttle, which came out, you know, just right as, you know, the height of COVID. So that's been pushed off. But we are, you know, now gonna, you know, move forward. We are also working currently with pulling in the National Park and looking at the potential for that commuter shuttle and then how it could, you know, whether it's a hybrid or connect with the potential visitor shuttle that would also loop in the National Park and, you know, Minuteman National Park and, you know, focus on, you know, visitor and an economic side of things and have that really dovetail in with the commuter shuttle project as well. So we're excited about that.
Also good news. What's some, an approximate timeline for that? Not like exact, but.
Or which one?
Either one for, tell me about the, the bridge. Let's talk about bridge construction. I know it hasn't even started, but when do you envision that? Just.
Oh, as far, well, design and, design and permitting will likely take a year.
Okay.
And because while we did, you know, we have some preliminary, you know, architectural side, you know, we did that whole visioning with the La Dollman Architects, you know, that'll have to be, you know, kind of looped in with the engineering side of it. And then going through the permitting side of things. So you know, that's gonna, that's gonna be at least, at least a year. And then for the shuttle, I know Marsha is also on this call. So I see she unmuted herself. So I'm going to have her jump in and give an update on the timing for that as well.
Well, I was, I was going to add a little bit about the bridge. We need to work with the owners of 300 Baker Ave to establish an easement for the public to access from where the bread, bridge outlets on their property to Baker Ave. And once that easement is established, the project would be eligible for state transportation improvement funds. So if we can establish that easement, we, we have a source of funding for construction of the bridge, which is something that we are working on. With regard to Crosstown Connect and our, our feasibility studies, we are, for the visitor feasibility study through the Minuteman National Park. The initial draft will be ready this fall of that program. And we have tied in the information that we hope to gather with our workforce transportation shuttle and have started some preliminary discussions with our, the Executive Director of, of the Crosstown Connect and also participant in transaction associates. So our next steps will be to prepare an RFP and move forward with that program and hopefully get something launched by the end of this year or sometime next spring. We'll need to talk to the state about seeing if we can roll it out a little bit later, given that people are not yet fully back to work and that our parking lots are currently empty so that there's plenty of parking spaces. So we'd like to make sure that we, whatever we're proposing meets a need for the residents and for commuters.
Back to you. Thanks.
And then I did remember one other thing. So we also were successful in getting a grant through the state. I believe it's $15,000 to investigate the potential for business improvement districts in the three village business districts. So a business improvement district is where the property owners decide to come together and create a management structure. And it, it's a very formal process through the state that allows this to happen, where they pitch in from a funding source to do different things and projects that go a little bit above and beyond what the town could, you know, could provide. So whether that's, you know, have, you know, you know, sweeping the sidewalks or, you know, additional, you know, snow removal or, you know, watering planters, putting out the awnings, assisting with different events or functions or, you know, it, it's whatever they decide as an improvement district. So this grant just starts that, you know, first step in investigating whether that's something that those property owners in those business districts want to do. So we will be going to the Concord Business Partnership Meeting, having meetings, you know, with the different property owners. And, you know, moving forward with investigating whether that's something, you know, one, two, or all three, you know, want to do. So we did receive a grant and a consultant will be assisting us in looking at the feasibility of doing that.
Oh, you've been rather busy. Good. Any, any questions for Elizabeth? Any liaison reports? Who took over Comprehensive Sustainable Energy Committee? As a liaison? Somebody remember. CSEC? Right. I, I will follow up with Elizabeth. They just, they send out, um, they've got a meeting, I think, Thursday. So. Might be me. I don't know. Um, any other board comment or update before I go to general public comment? Okay. So those are all of the items for business. I will open it up to general comments. And again, if you raise your hand, we will unmute you. You can state your, your name and address. Not seeing any hands up yet. So. Oh, see a couple of hands. All right. I'm going to unmute Mr. Galis. If you could state your name and address, please.
Okay. Hold on a second here.
We can hear you.
You can hear me? Good. Okay.
Yeah.
You don't need to see me. Mark Galis, 62 Prescott Road. Yeah. I, I just wanted to make a comment in terms of some things that might be helpful to clarify, have the information handy at town meeting with regard to Article 37, because with regard to the, the gas station property, your, the, this proposal would be to expand the business district to, to incorporate in its entirety a lot that is a parcel that is used for business. But in the other case, it's expanding the business district beyond the parcel that's partially used for business currently and then partially into another parcel. So it just raises questions for me about the kind of cleanness of having boundary, you know, zone, business owned boundaries aligned with property boundaries. And that raises another question, which is, it seems like the, if the GIS map is accurate, the current buildings and uses are in violation of zoning because they extend, or at least sort of non-conforming in some sense. I don't know what the right term is, because they extend into residential area, both on both properties. And so an additional benefit to the property owners of this, it would bring them into conformity with the, you know, renting or having businesses there. So that's an additional kind of moving part. And one other thing related to the, oh, I guess maybe that's, that's the main questions I, I wanted to make. Oh, one other question too, is are there other parcels around the edges of this district that are similarly kind of mixed, mixed zoned? Anyway, so you know what I'm saying? I'm just kind of throwing it out there. These might be things that would be helpful to have clear answers for at town meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Walsh, I will ask you to unmute and please state your name and address for the record.
Merle Walsh, 169 Theroe Street. Again, thank you for all of your work. And I understand that you unfortunately just have a limited focus that you can look at, and I really appreciate how well you do that. I unfortunately am a systems person. So I look at things in a more entire way, how they affect the whole community and the neighborhood. And my concern is, first of all, can someone answer as to why they did not separate 37 from the accessory warrant, why it was included?
Um, Article 37 is just about changing the boundaries of the Theroe Business District. And there are two, two parcels or, you know, two sides of that district. So that's one.
I understand that, Christine. My question is, why is it on the consent form with the accessory apartments and those other very positive, what I feel are positive things? Why is it not its own article? It's on the consent form, isn't it? The consent?
No, 37 about the, the one we discussed about the Theroe Business District is not on the consent calendar. So it will come.
Okay. So it's, it's off now. That's great. I appreciate that. I really do. I guess one of my concerns, and I go back to it, is pedestrians. I've looked at their plans and I know that Killer B LLC is new to property buying in Concord. And, but I know they've already obtained by the, from the MBTA, the, the, the acreage behind there that goes to the train. And, and so I know they're very set on what they have planned. And I, my adding up is there, they want to add up to 22 new spaces because they're not only going to put in that U-turn. They're going to put in a second driveway that, and they're going to put four parking spaces behind the two family house. So this is not a small corner change. It is a large corner change. And I wonder if anybody has even spoken to Killer B LLC and said, gee, would it be better to put residential homes here or apartment dwellings versus a Starbucks? And I, I hate to keep saying Starbucks, but many of us tried to deal with this for many years. And when I measured the, the driveway from where you go in to where it will come out, you're talking about a two and a half car length distance. It's not a lot of distance. And my concern, and for me, it would be easier because people would stop turning in, in my driveway or the people across the street or the people on Theroe Court. You know, because if you make a left or right turn, but I can't in good conscience even be in favor of that because what I see is children, bicyclists, people. Theroe Street is one of the most widely used pedestrian streets on this side of Concord because it has everything that people need to use to live on a daily basis. Grocery stores, cleaners, pizza, ice cream. And I love the new restaurant Karma, but let me tell you, the traffic increase has been significant since they've come. People cross back and forth to get takeout. That's fine. That's part of life. But I think to go forward with this rezoning without thinking about what Chris spoke about earlier, the entire district and without giving our town manager time to do what he has planned to do, which is to do a traffic management program. And I think to go forward with this, unfortunately, and I know you're not involved in the permitting process, but I also know that once there's a stone, a, a bit of approval on a zoning, things can move very quickly. And I have great concerns that is not being looked as a system. It's being looked as a little tiny thing. So that's why unfortunately, I cannot support this. And there are many people who, some of them online, who are not going to speak tonight. I have one other question. Is it true that in order to get this? So you've already moved it from the consent. That's been done, correct?
The, the town moderator has made, you know, formed the consent counter. That was, that was up to her. Yeah.
All right. Well, I'm sorry for, for not being in favor because I know you've worked hard on it. But you have to live here to see all the near misses. And I think why I became so impassioned by this is there have been four deaths in the time I've lived on Theroe Street between Sudbury Main Street and Theroe. And I just think this is a great opportunity and I appreciate it coming to the head for people to take a pause and to think about the, 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 the safety of this area. And so I appreciate your work, but I cannot support it. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Um, Marsha, I'm gonna unmute you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to speak to Mr. Galis's question about the, the non-conforming nature of the two properties that are subject to that zoning bylaw amendment. Both projects were subject to, there's a provision in the zoning bylaw that allows a property owner to extend the use from one district into another district, provided it has frontage in the less restrictive zoning district. So in both cases, they are both subject to a special permit that allowed that use to be extended into the residential zone. So I don't know if that's something that you want to add to your presentation or something just to be aware of when questions come up at town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I've got background noise from someone. All right, Mr. Stein, I'm gonna ask you to unmute. If you could state your name and address and your comment, please.
Sure. Good evening. Joe Stein, 21 Theroe Street. Yeah. Thanks for taking my comment. I just had a quick question. It's more of a comment question, I guess. So there's a lot of language in the proposed bylaw amendments for the Theroe District, which is where I live and have a, you know, been here for about eight years and plan to be here for many more. A lot of language about four stories. And I know there was no public discussion on height. You know, four stories is, is really tall, right? That's, that's excessive and it's incompatible with the neighborhood. And I'm just curious. Will height be included in future public forums or is this kind of a, more of a foregone conclusion that will be, you know? So I'll just leave my comment there. Thank you.
Thanks. And I did, I'm not sure if you joined early enough. And unfortunately, I did not start the recording in time, but we had a presentation at the beginning that was kind of the transition between the, the vision that MAPC put together and the, and the, what, what we would do for zoning. And, and we know the zoning change process is going to kind of unfold over the next year or so before any changes go to town meeting. I think one of the things that we saw regarding height was that, you know, four stories, right now, it's proposed that four stories is allowed as long as it's not within 125 feet of a residential district. So that kind of speaks to where within the overall district, we might see four stories building. And the other thing was to consider that forced, allowing four stories in, in some areas would seem to make it more attractive to developers and, and be able to get kind of the, what we're looking for in terms of mixed use and really provide you know, wanted services and, and stores in the, in that area. So is it a foregone conclusion? I would say it's, I would, I would say, based on what we've heard, you know, it seems like a good opportunity. But that, that change and the codification of this change, changes will, you know, we will make our proposals over the next year and then they would still need to be ratified by town meeting. But board, other board members have any other comments? And, and Elizabeth, you have something to add?
Yeah. So, but I, I. Yeah, so, but I, I will answer it. There's gonna be numerous opportunities for input on the, you know, further development, you know, of this zoning bylaw. The, the problem, and it, well, from a, from a planner's perspective, it is very, very challenging and difficult to do zoning by committee. It, it is almost impossible. So you, you kind of actually just have to, you know, throw something out there and start to, you know, have a conversation about that and amend that. So you, you, you never get it right, you know, the first time you throw draft zoning out there. It just, it doesn't happen. But it, it allows for the conversation, you know, to start and allows for the input and, you know, the back and forth. And so, yes, there's gonna be, you know, lots of opportunities to discuss this. What also happens is that, once you get to a certain point where you're, you have this bigger picture and then you start focusing and you, and then you really start, you know, getting down to the details. We can utilize, we have an amazing GIS analyst who could sit there and take those dimensional requirements and put that into a GIS map. And, and you'd be able to see where, you know, okay, this would be, you know, like the only spot where that could happen with these dimensional requirements. And that allows people to visualize things different. So, yeah, again, that happens as you start refining different things. And it's just, it, it's because of the time period, you're talking a year to two years is, is the normal process to adopt zoning. You, you just, you don't go through and you don't do all of those minor things in the very beginning because I, I, I wouldn't be working here. No planner would be able to do that. So you, you just, you have to start somewhere.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Galis, I see your hand up again.
Yes, thank you very much. I, I wanted to thank Marcia for that clarification, that's very helpful. Following on that though, does, does that mean that if the business zone is expanded sub, partway into the 138, 150 properties, that by a special permit, the owner, either by, you know, special permit on that property or by applying to combine the lots, could then use the entire, get a special permit to use the entire 148, 150 for business use? Thank you.
So what I can tell you is that being able to expand in, from the business district into a residential district is a special permit process through the Board of Appeals. It is, is a discretionary process. And they have to make all of those special permit findings. And I don't have the language exactly in front of me, but it is, I, so when they expanded, you know, I wasn't around when they, this special permit for the Starbucks site was granted. And so I can't speak to the findings that the Board of Appeals made. But for, for them to, for anybody to think that they would apply for a special permit to the Board of Appeals to extend the district another 30 feet, one that would be only halfway, you know, halfway through the residential two-family house. It wouldn't, wouldn't make it all the way through the house anyways. But even if it did, you know, that's where you get into the special permit being discretionary. And it, it's even smaller than that existing site. You wouldn't be able to accommodate all of the dimensional or the requirements for a business as far as, you know, the, the parking and all the other business requirements for that two-family residential site. So it is, is the possibility there? Yes, it's a provision in the zoning bylaw that any business that abuts residential can do. Do, do I see the Board of Appeals being able to make the required findings? And without looking at the, where that 30 foot would be, I don't, I don't think it makes it across the whole entire lot. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't allow them to do anything anyways.
Okay, I guess what I'm, I'm not sure which 30 foot you're referring, there was talk about, I mean, that's another thing not clear to me from the description under the article and the warrant, that it doesn't actually say how many feet the boundary is changed. You know, is moved, it talks about a driveway.
It was 22 feet, yeah. Okay. I, I, I mean, it is, you're right, I think it, it might be in the presentation, so I'll have to go back and look.
Okay, so I just think these specifics are important. And, and, you know, it's obviously in the interest of the town meeting going smoothly, any of these odd things that might come up, it's good to kind of pin them down as much as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I see no other hands up. I will give people another few seconds. Any, any parting thoughts from the, from the board?
The, oh, I do have that provision, if anybody's interested. It's section 2.3.4 is the provision that allows the extension of a business into residential by 30 feet. And it's by issuance of a special permit by the Board of Appeals with input from the planning board.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you everyone. There is another planning board meeting in early September. It is before the town meeting. And I think it's gonna be Matt's last meeting with us, so don't miss that one. And we will be looking for a new planning board member. So we're actively looking for green cards and we're, we're working on that, so. Spread the word. Thanks, everybody. I will adjourn the meeting at 9:36.
Thanks.
Thank you, have a good night, everybody.
Bye, everybody.